There we are. Wow. Are they ready? The light's not on. Does that matter?
Yeah.
They're ready. Good evening. This Oak Park City Council meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Norris, our wonderful artist that you saw outside, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan?
Here.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar? Councilmember Radner? Councilmember Crawford?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Next, I would like you to add one item to the agenda, item 9E1. This is an approval of a five-year lease agreement with Xerox for copier and printing services. So, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. These are routine items presented for approval without discussion as a single item. Should any member wish to discuss any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered separately. A. Regular city council meeting minutes for September 15th, 2025. Our mayor Protem led that meeting beautifully when I was out of town. B. Request to approve payment application number five for the 2025 landscape maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Ferndale, Michigan, in the amount of $8,514. C. Request to approve payment application number five for the 2025 lawn maintenance contract to Capital Landscapes of Ferndale, Michigan, in the amount of $16,590.58. D. Request to approve the winter maintenance agreement with the Road Commission of Oakland County for the 2025-26 winter maintenance on county roads. This is an annual thing. E. Approval of payment application number five and change order number three to eminent excavating local LLC of Dearborn for the 2025 water main replacement project M769 in the amount of $70,645.68 and a credit of $125,466.83 respectively. F. 2026 to through 2028 Oakland County Animal Shelter Inter-local Agreement for Services. G. Approval of pay application number four and change order number one to A&amp;G Construction and Remodeling of Detroit for the 2025 Northfield Reconstruction Project M770 in the amount of $87,898.66 and a credit of $57,116.96 respectively. H. Resolution approving Salud 11 LLC for a social district permit. I. Request to advertise for bids for the city complex asbestos and universal waste abatement project. J. Request to advertise for bids for the city complex building demolition project. K. Request to approve payment application number three for the 2025 block pruning project to Lim Walkers Tree and Snow LLC of Kennebec, Michigan, in the amount of $11,510. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say aye. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Do we see any elected officials who would like to speak? That brings us to item seven on the agenda, which is a special recognition presentation of public safety merit citations and Director Steve Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager Tungate. I'd like to thank you once again for a 40-minute opportunity and platform to recognize some truly outstanding work by four of our public safety officers. This evening, I have the privilege of presenting merit citations to four officers for their life-saving efforts in assisting one of our residents, Ms. Rhonda Rhine, who's present with us tonight and doing remarkably well. And this is a direct result of the swift and decisive actions taken by these officers. This profession is unique in countless ways, but I can think of no greater achievement in any career than having the opportunity to save a life. And as I call these officers forward, I would ask that you come, stand forward, front and center, and face the audience, please. Officer Nathan Maloche. Officer Maloche is a two-and-a-half-year veteran of the Public Safety Department, currently assigned to the Patrol Division. He's a member of our drone team, serves as a field training officer, and has been selected to attend our fire investigator school. And also, he's just been awarded the 2024 Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award for the City of Oak Park. So, we're very fortunate to have Officer Nathan Maloche with us. Unfortunately, Officer Zachary Harper is not able to be here. He's finishing out tryouts with the Oakland County Special Response Team. They have a collaborative team where they allow various members from different departments throughout the county to try out. It's a very arduous process, extremely difficult, consist of interviews, firearms training, and then a very intense tactical course that spans throughout the course of a week. And he has been one of the fortunate ones to make it to, actually, Thursday. So, tomorrow, we're hoping for good news and that he'll go ahead and finish out. But he wanted to be here, and I'd just like to say that Officer Harper is a two-year veteran of the Oak Park Public Safety Department, also assigned to the Patrol Division. He plays a key role in our Oak Park Training Unit, assisting in training and development of the newer officers coming on the department. So, good luck to him. And like I said, we're happy that he's made it thus far. I'd ask for Officer Elizabeth Dewey to come and stand front and center, please. Officer Dewey has been with the Department of Public Safety for about a year and a half now, and serves also in our Patrol Division. Definitely a joy to have, loved by all of the department members. She's clearly on her way, charting a path to be selected for various specialized units, thanks to her strong performance and work potential. So, we're very fortunate to have Officer Elizabeth Dewey. I would ask Officer Maximilian Hill to come and stand front and center, please. Officer Hill will mark his one-year anniversary with the department this December. He currently serves in our Patrol Division and has been, he excelled in both our field training officer program and the Oakland Police Academy, where he was chosen as one of the squad leaders. So, we are very fortunate to have Officer Hill with us, and he's blazing a trail in such a short period of time. I stood before this council many times to celebrate retirements of our seasoned officers, but today, I stand here equally proud to recognize and honor some exceptional efforts of our newer officers, a reflection of the changing of the guard. The four officers before you tonight, along with the officers that you see who have lined the rear of this council chambers, represent the absolute best that this profession has to offer. Their dedication, courage, and promise for the future make me extremely proud and excited to watch them grow into their full potential. And without further ado, the incident in question occurred on Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, at approximately 7:10 a.m. And the merit citation reads as follows. It says, "On Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, at approximately 7:10 a.m., Officers Maloche, Harper, Dewey, and Hill were dispatched to the 24,000 block of Coolidge in response to a report of an unconscious 64-year-old female inside a vehicle. Upon arrival, officers located the victim, who was unresponsive and showed no signs of life. A witness on scene reported that he observed the victim suffer a cardiac arrest and immediately called 911. Without hesitation, Officers Maloche, Harper, Dewey, and Hill removed the victim from the vehicle and began administering CPR. At approximately 7:25 a.m., Universal Alliance arrived and assumed primary medical care, working in tandem with officers who continued life-saving measures. At 7:41 a.m., the victim regained a pulse and was transported to Providence Hospital for medical treatment." Remarkably, three weeks later, on Wednesday, September 17th, the victim personally visited the Public Safety Department to express her profound gratitude. She thanked the officers for saving her life and shared that she is now doing well and has been fitted with an external defibrillator as part of her ongoing care. The quick response, composure, and decisive actions of the officers, Maloche, Harper, Dewey, and Hill were instrumental in saving a life. Their professionalism, dedication, and exemplary performance reflect a great credit upon themselves, the department, and the public safety profession as a whole. In recognition of your outstanding actions and commitment to duty, you are hereby commended for the exceptional manner in which you served during this critical incident, and is signed by myself, the Director of Public Safety. So, again, congratulations and some outstanding work here. At this time, actually, Mrs. Rhine would like to come to the microphone. I'm going to have her have a few words. This is the young lady who we had the pleasure of assisting on the date in question. And as you can see, doesn't appear that she had a sick moment in her life.
Good evening, everyone. I really would love to give my thanks, and I really appreciate the work that you all do. And I would not be standing here if it wasn't for their quick response for me to be here today. I'm a social worker on the east side of the city of Detroit. I was on my way to work that morning and have not been back, but it's okay because I feel I'm truly blessed to look at you and say to you, "Thank you for my life, and I'm doing okay." So, whatever you do, I wish you all three well job well done.
Mayor, all you guys, with Ms. Rhine there.
I know some family members of the officers are here. You stay up there, Ms. Rhine. You and Mr. Rhine.
Thank you again, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to our amazing Public Safety Department for continuing to amaze us with their good works. This puts us to number eight on the agenda, accounting reports. This is, need approval for payment of an invoice submitted by Schiffman Fournier for Legal Services Retainer for October 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2025, in the total amount of $20,000. Is there a motion, please? So moved. Thank you. Second. Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, please. Mayor Protem, Sean Whitehead.
Is this a quarterly, is this a quarterly retainer, City Manager, or is this for the year?
Yeah, this is their, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem, this is their quarterly.
Yes, this is their quarterly retainer. We paid us in advance as well. We always have.
Paid in advance, right. Thank you. City Clerk, would you?
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. 9A1, I would like to turn it over to our artists, artists and residents. City Clerk Ed Norris, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to just make everybody aware that we do have an election coming up, and November 4th, it's our general city election. We have two council seats and the mayor. The council's running unopposed, so, but we're having the election, and we wanted to make you aware of some things. Absentee ballots have been mailed out to those on the permanent list. So, if you'd like to vote absentee and haven't received them or want one, they can contact our office. We can do that. We'd also like to remind everyone that there's early voting that will be happening, starting October 25th through November 2nd. That's in the community center. Those times are 8:30 to 4:30 every day, except Thursday. That's a day when we run from noon until 8:00 p.m. And then, of course, Election Day is November 4th. Polls are open from 7:00 to 8:00. And on that day, you have to vote in your polling location. So, if you have any questions about it, we appreciate it. Thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk.
Just a comment. A lot of people like the early voting because you don't, there won't be lines this time, but in a larger election, you don't have to wait in the line, and you can see your ballot go in the machine. So, it is, it's popular, I think, with a lot of people who enjoy the option. Thank you.
Okay. 9B1, I'd like to ask Director Kimberly Maroney to join me at the podium, please. Good evening, Kim.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and City Council members. We have an approval of pay application number two and change order one for the 11-mile alley and parking lot reconstruction project, and that is in the amount of $296,539.81 and $25,830, respectively. The parking lot currently, the west lot, they are finishing doing the asphalt today. Tomorrow, they will do the striping, and it will be wide open on Saturday. So, it's going to be ready for our annual Truck or Treat event. Then, we'll move over to the east lot.
Wow. Open Saturday. So, Saturday's the event?
No, it's next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Okay, plenty of time. Easier to get to Mother Handsome's for a cup of coffee now.
Absolutely.
Cute. All right. So, first, we need a motion to approve this pay application.
I'll make the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Sean Whitehead, and second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Stephanie Crawford. Any discussion or questions about the parking lot redo? The other side will get started now, the farther east parking lot?
Yes, starting on Monday, they're going to start tearing out the alleyway on the east lot. They'll finish that. That'll take about three weeks. And then, from there, they'll move into the actual parking area, just like they did, kind of mimicking what they did on the west lot, one phase at a time.
Like a pass-through park that they are working on? When are they going to?
So, the pass-through park is, the pavement and everything is in there, and we are going to be ordering all of the amenities that'll be placed there as well.
And what do you think, those things will come in the spring?
It's about an eight-weekly time. So, we'll put them out before then, the springtime. They'll be out this winter.
It looks beautiful back there. It was a parking lot in bad shape, and it's going to be a gathering place for all of us, for events and things. And on the side, I was at a dinner on the weekend, and one of the people in the dinner, who is a real estate, commercial real estate agent, came over to me to rave about Director Kim Maroney. So, people are talking. Any, any further questions or comments about the parking lot? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Okay, 9C1, Director Steve Cooper. And it looks like we have our Records Division Manager Stephanie Prister joining us. Welcome to both of you.
Drug her out. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager, Tungate. Before you, we have a request for authorization to purchase Dispatch Console Center to replace the current one that's out of date and obsolete. The project is going to total $79,773.63. Public Safety Department's requesting authorization to purchase and execute the replacement of the Dispatch Console from the Omni partner contract number 07-62 as part of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. The current equipment is approximately 23 years old, and the mechanics are no longer functional. Consoles are beyond their useful lifespan, warranting a replacement. So, it's recommended that the City Council authorize the Public Safety Department to participate in the Omni partner contract for the Dispatch Console replacement. Again, totaling $79,773.63. There's currently a balance of $60,000 available in our drug, law, and enforcement fund designated for this expense, and I'm also requesting that we roll over $20,000 from our 2024-2025 fiscal year that remains unexpended in the Public Safety Capital Outlay Fund to cover the remaining balance needed for this project.
So, Director Cooper, I want to just have you go back. The material effect on the general fund is only 20,000 because the 60's coming from the drug forfeiture fund.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And like I said, the, the equipment is quite dated and old. We've had the, we've been in this building what, 13 years?
Yeah.
So, we brought it from the old Public Safety Building when we came over. And at that time, like I said, it was, and I was being kind, saying it was 10 years old, probably older than that.
Yeah.
So, you're looking at 23 years that we've had this equipment, and it's, you know, it's not functional.
Is it safe to say this is, council members especially, I know we always talk about this, I'm always, I always forget that it's been, what, 12 years or so since we moved into this building, but this kind of falls into that, we need to update it anyway category?
Right. And we were looking at one point in time, trying to maybe piecemeal and get some of it functional. And by the time before we were able to actually use some funding to kind of, I guess, repair it, it started breaking like crazy, and it would, made no sense to just throw good money after bad. So, like I said, Stephanie did all of the work and the research as far as going out and looking at different facilities and finding out what would best fit our, our dispatch center for, for our team, and...
Stephanie, let me ask you a question, if I could. What is the, in your opinion, because I don't know that we really would have this, useful life for this equipment?
Useful life?
Yeah.
At least 10 years. So, we were primarily looking at, like, warranties offered with the products.
Yeah.
This one offers a maintenance package as well as limited lifetime warranty.
Okay.
So, there's some longevity of it.
Is there a motion to authorize this purchase?
So moved.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Julie Edgar, thank you. Questions or discuss? My question is, what is the new-fangled one do that the old one didn't do? Is it good?
It's, it's, the positioning of it is a lot easier on their body.
Makes sense. Ergonomically correct. Ergonomically correct.
Yeah. It's not a whole lot of fancy bells and whistles. It's kind of like you wear it, you sit in that chair for 23 years, you need a new one. So you roll a new chair in there. This is, you know, you get a few bells and whistles, as you know, the way that the monitors and stuff oscillate and turn. But there's nothing real fancy about it. It's basic, it's frugal. It, it serves the purpose, but just long overdue.
I was in that department and saw it in use and it was inspiring to see. Are we ready to vote? Is there another question?
Just one question, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And one point of discussion. Thank you. Will we have the equipment if it was approved tonight?
It is a 10 to 12-week lead time, so we're looking at early next year.
And then, point of discussion. This, this is why I always say we provide our public safety with what they need because it literally saves lives, as we said tonight. And so just thank you for always being frugal and also bringing to us what you need, Chief. So thank you.
Definitely, we appreciate, you know, City Council, City Manager, always making sure that we have what, what we need. I know budgets are always tight and it's tough making decisions when it comes down to who's going to get what or what level of equipment you're going to be able to, you know, supply to different departments. So we're definitely very appreciative, we don't take it for granted. So thank you so much for that.
Is there a motion to authorize this?
Madam Mayor, we have, we have that.
Got a motion, got, good, good. Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just, Director Cooper, one last thing I wanted to just mention, too. We are planning, I think at the next meeting, we're planning on talking about the city's drone program. I got a sneak peek at this the other day. You're going to be amazed when you see the results that this thing's going to provide and the capacity that this thing's going to give us that we don't currently have. It's amazing, so.
Yeah, yeah, we're definitely excited about it. Like I said, I don't want to tip our hand, but the, like I said, we have a vehicle that's actually set up specifically for that drone. And you popped it, it's the Chevy Tahoe. So you popped the hatch of the rear of the Chevy Tahoe, there's a fold-up actually monitor. Then you have underneath there, you have compartments where you can keep the drone. But I mean, you're literally sitting there and you're actually flying this thing like you're watching the television. City Manager had the opportunity to fly it all over the city and we actually took it to like Nine and Cooley's and got a pretty good shot at the Renaissance Center from where we were right here.
Holy.
So not only is it, you know, it's the latest and greatest as far as technology.
Thermal and all the other features are present.
You got thermal, you got lights on it, you got audible microphones on that thing. We use it, like I said, for fires. We use it for, you know, if we have a missing person, whether it's an elderly person with dementia, a lost child, you know, and the bad guy. So, you know, we get a particular area in the city where we're getting hit with theft from vehicles. You know, we can have that drone up and over in that particular area. And once you put it up 400 feet in the air, bad guy's got no idea that it's even up there. You can't even hear it. So, you know, it's like an eye in the sky, just monitoring particular areas. So it's a game changer and, like I said, we'll be excited to show it to you in the coming weeks here, as soon as the City Manager sets that up.
And I'd like to do that at the next meeting. And I think the other thing, too, just maybe a little bit of a lead-in, too, is I am, we still have to see where the numbers are, but I remain supportive of the rooftop one where Dispatch, it literally goes up over an address as the call comes into Dispatch.
Yes. Oak County Sheriff has, I know they have one. It's actually, the drone is actually mounted on the roof of the building. And you can program certain runs by, you put in certain codes. So if you get a robbery in progress, a house fire, you know, shots fired or whatever it is, as soon as that call comes in to Dispatch, that information goes right to the drone. Boom, the door opens and that drone is out and gone in a matter of seconds. When we had our Citizens Academy, one example of how we put the drone in operation was we had a report of shots being fired at a particular location. And we were just hap, so happened to be, I know Mr. Sherman was there and had a chance to witness that as well. Before the actual officers got there, I had my team, who was actually running the Citizens Academy, pull that drone out. They had that drone up and at that location less than a minute and had a full eye, bird's eye view of what was going on. So they were reporting back to Dispatch until the cars arriving on scene, like, hey, we got a car, you know, leaving westbound on this particular street. There's no traffic out here, there's, there's nothing there. So you're talking about technology that is, you know, you're talking about probably replacing helicopters with those things in the, in the near future. So they're, they're, they're pretty affordable for what they do. And the technology, like I say, is amazing. It's nothing like you've ever seen, so.
Unbelievable.
We're happy, we're happy to have.
And more to come. We'll do it, we'll do it at the next meeting, but we'll have a whole thing where we'll show.
There's our, one of our main drone operators, John Dean, there, one of the biggest cheerleaders for public safety. So he'll be operating it and, like I said, if you guys want an opportunity, City Council, to operate and play with it, John will be more than happy to, to walk you through that. But like I said, the, the technology is amazing. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. Nine D one, I'd like to ask the Deputy City Manager of Municipal Services and Public Works, David D. DeCosta. It's not D, is it?
No. Good evening, Mayor, City Council and City Manager Tungate. Before you tonight is an invoice and change order two from Newman Smith Architecture for the Event Hub Project. Change order two is for contracted civil engineering work that was required as part of this contract. Construction, as you know, is ongoing and we hope to have the building enclosed by winter. It is recommended that the attached invoice number 19 and change order number two from Newman Smith Architecture for the, in the amounts of $16,841.13 and $10,500, $500, respectively, be approved. Funding is available in the Event Hub Construction Fund. Happy to answer any questions if you have.
Okay.
Councilmembers, can I just add? We're, we're going to do an Event Hub update at the next meeting as well.
That would be?
It's obviously coming along very nicely.
Visually, it looks great.
So we need.
Roll call.
Roll call. Motion to approve this payment request and change order. Councilmember Julie Edgar?
Second.
Councilmember Stephanie Crawford. Any discussion or questions about the project? How, how much done is it and when do we expect it to be done and what's, what's next?
I don't have a percentage. The percentage that we've paid for the project does not quite represent the percent of the project completed. I would say we're 25% done with the project. We'll have a payment and an update at the next meeting for you for the construction-wise. But we are progressing well. As you can see, the steel vendor and the masonry vendor is hard at work. Most of the, some of the outside block is done. The steel is primarily completed. We're looking to install the steel at the benchell next week. So again, more, more progress. The City Manager Tungate said, we'll give a further update next meeting, but we are planning on closing it by winter time, which would allow us to have it open for maybe a kickoff event early next summer.
Like the state of the city.
I don't want.
Yes. We've got a reservation in.
There you go.
All right.
She's booked it, too.
Juneteenth, I was going to say, Juneteenth.
Name and change order. Okay, we have a motion on this one?
Yeah, we have a, we have a motion. We're ready to vote.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor, no, I'm sorry, Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
And Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, councilmembers, nine E one, I'm going to have Deputy City Manager of Community Services Adam Ozark join me at the podium. And this is a request to approve a five-year lease agreement with Xerox for copier and printing services, subject to final review by our esteemed colleague, City Attorney.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. As Mr. Tungate mentioned before you, we have basically a renewal of a five-year lease agreement with the Xerox Corporation. Kind of as part of our due diligence, we solicited and reviewed three competitive quotes from three vendors, Xerox, RICO and Toshiba. This new lease agreement with Xerox will ensure continued efficiency and reliability in our printing and document management systems while achieving cost savings over the term of the five-year agreement. The city will also be adding additional services to our printing fleet, which is Workplace Cloud. And again, just for a little background, Workplace Cloud is something that can kind of help us, you know, track, run monthly reports on, you know, who is printing what. So if some of our, you know, printing costs, because it kind of gets expensive, black and white or color, we can, you know, really narrow down, you know, run those reports and use data-driven decisions to help those cost savings. And with this new agreement, we'll be saving about $2,718 a year. So we're getting a brand-new fleet, adding additional services to our, you know, printing fleet. And happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
I was curious, how are we saving all this money, huh?
Kind of just with, so the last time the city got into this, it was about five years ago. So kind of one a month about new pricing. And then we also negotiated down very aggressively multiple times to ensure we got a lower rate. So it was a back-and-forth process, but from the original quote, we negotiated it down another 5%. So.
Councilmembers, I want to just chime in and just tell you that Adam did a wonderful job negotiating this price for us and we got a superb deal because of that. So thank you so much for your efforts, sir.
So let's see, we need a motion to approve, yes? Motion to approve the five-year, five-year lease agreement with Xerox for copier and printing services, subject to final review by the City Attorney. Yep. So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. Councilmembers Edgar and Crawford. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmembers, I have one more thing to add here. And I just wanted to, this, this is recent, obviously, you've probably heard about it in the news. The state budget has been approved and signed into law by the governor. Oak Park revenue sharing is set to lose $147,791 in revenue sharing annually. Our road funding, and these are unofficial numbers, by the way, is set to go up about 1.1 million. That's good news. And Public Safety Trust Fund, we're expected to receive about 91,000 additional funding. They've not yet released the details as to how or what that money can be spent on. So the bad news, we're going to lose a bit of revenue sharing, we're used to that. And we're going to gain it in some other areas. We also obviously can't commingle these funds because these funds are special funds outside of revenue sharing. So there's been some major changes in the state budget that will have an impact on Oak Park, but we are ready to handle it with our changes in operations and planning for it. So with that, unless there's any questions, that completes the City Manager Report for this evening. Thank you.
Well done, City Manager Tungate. Amazing how you make all this work. We are now, we will now conduct a public hearing to your comments and concerns on the following special assessment districts. 725 unpaid utility invoices. 726 unpaid false alarm invoices. 727 unpaid miscellaneous concrete replacement invoices. 728 unpaid property blight invoices. And 729 unpaid sidewalk replacement invoices. I now declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak about the special assessments? Please come to the podium. First, provide your name and the property address for the record.
Hi, thank you, Your Honors. 23131 Jesse Miller. 23131 Forrest. And my issue was, they said my grass was too long. And I mowed it the next day and they came back three days later and trashed my lawn with zero turns and then charged us, or wanted to charge us some money for it. And it was, it was unfair.
So. You have the address and? We're going to, we're going to. 23131 Forrest. We're going to research this and get back to you with what's determined. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Sorry for the inconvenience. Anyone else speaking on the public hearing?
This is my neighbor who contests the fact that our, our grass is never. Top of the evening to you all.
Good evening.
Mayor and councilmember and City Manager. And to everyone here. My name is Octavia L. Shamley. Our property address is 24061 Berkeley Street. I'm here about my utility bill. It is, yes, it's high. I had issues working this year. I have my own business and with the building I worked with between being sick, USDA and grant of inspection having me to update my SSO P for rodent, and you can't work. I made chicken salad and when I can't produce, I can't stock the shelves at Myers. And then also the building issue where I am located at this temporary time, they had issues. So I've been out of work. So I've been behind on my utility bills and mortgage. So I am just asking, the amount that they want us to put down, want me to put down to, for installment, to do installments, I just can't, couldn't afford it. Things are turning around, but it's just asking for assistance and helping me to make the arrangement or financial amount so I can get back on track. That's what I'm asking. Thank you.
We will research it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I've been in that position and it's uncomfortable.
Well, if I tell you something on the side, you really going to look at me and go like, for real? And it isn't, it's like, I'm like a, how to say this in a way it won't sound? I'm like a horse riding out with a carrot in front of me because I have money that is, I'm waiting on. But unfortunately, when you, I'm dealing with death and siblings, it's, I'm pending on the, on the bank. And the bank can't do anything until the lawyers get one sibling to take care of what they need to do so we all can take care of our livelihoods. So this has been going on since January.
Thank you for sharing. May it all work out for you.
Yeah, with us.
Anyone else? Please come.
Good evening. My name is Wilbur Palowski. I reside at 13641 Kingston Street. And it's ongoing with the restaurant. I give up on that, I'm going to be moving. But I've been here since 1984. But the whole sidewalk issue, I didn't want them. Mine were fine. I had them remeasured them again. They put, went down from four to three. I got measurements that I did with my level. Only one sidewalk is level now, the other two is not level. They never fixed my island when they tore all that up. And it's, they never done a complete job. So I pay all my utilities on time, but I refuse to pay for something that wasn't done right. And that's the only reason I haven't made any payments on my sidewalk. But the trees eventually are going to do the same thing. This is the second go-around that they put sidewalks, the third time since I've been there. And this company that you guys got the last time was like a Mickey Mouse operation. And this company that you guys got the last time was like a Mickey Mouse operation. They were very disrespectful, they left stuff on my lawn, my lawn is not fixed the way it was, and I'm not fixing it. So I talked to somebody out there, they gave me a card to the engineer, city engineer, I'm going to send him the pictures, and I want somebody to come back out and recheck my sidewalk. And that's all I ask.
We will research that, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Same issue?
I had a question, I didn't answer.
I don't know if we can, can you ask me at the end of the, wait till the end, and we'll talk. Thank you. City clerk, anyone else? Yes.
William Holiday, address 14640 Talbot Street. It's about the unpaid pavement. All I asked for is just an extension. Not really fighting the cost or anything like that, just an extension with everything that costs so much with taxes and everything that's rising. So just an extension on paying it. I don't really mind the cost of it.
Can I ask him a question?
Please.
Sir, I, just, I'm just curious, were you in a payment plan by any chance?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's the Talbot address. Put down payment plan.
Well, no, because we just, I just wanted to know.
Anyone else? Please, yes.
My address is 24631 Kenosha Street. My concern is the water bill, it's like ridiculous high. I've been here in Oak Park, living in the same house 32 years, and I paid my water bill every month until this year. And this year, once I got behind on it, it seems like they add, you know, like late payments, so I never catch up on it. So no matter what, you know, how hard I try to pay it, I'm just not able to pay it.
Payment plan.
And I also looked at it, and I see that we have a new charge that's on there, too, like it's from the sewage or whatever, I see that's on there.
Is that new?
No.
It might not be new, but I just seen it, you know, when I was checking my water bill and stuff like that, trying to find out why.
It's surprising, why is, why is the sewage charge on the?
Oh, gosh. It's always been on there. I have a question tonight.
Yeah.
Have you, have you been in a payment plan by any chance?
Well, today, I came, I paid 279, and they said that I could pay $100 every month for 12 months, plus my bill. How can I afford to pay $100 every month, plus my bill?
Plus the usage. Okay, so we'll look into your matter, we have your address on file, correct, Mr. City Clerk? Okay, and then we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in the public hearing? No. Yes.
Just a point of order, can we ask questions or comment on public hearing?
What's the verdict? No.
Sorry.
The staff will ask those, and if you speak to the city manager, he'll make sure that your comment is asked. City Clerk Norris, what's that? Utility assistance.
Do you want me to speak about?
Oh, yes, yes.
Well, in certain situations, we do offer utility assistance. There are assistance programs outside of the city's resources, of course, and we have, I don't know if my instructor wants to speak to this, but we do have those in a, on the city's website, we do also have it in the resident services handbook. But we also offer in certain situations, this is why I'm asking you when you come up, if you're in a payment plan, it sounds like you were included in one. But we do, and you have to meet certain criteria, and yes, you do have to pay the usage while you're paying down the outstanding balance as well, but in certain situations, we do offer a payment plan. And if that, and we don't charge penalties during the course of the payment of that plan, as long as you keep up on the payments. So if you think that you may be in a situation where those resources are warranted, talk to our water billing department here at City Hall, and they'll walk you through it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? City Clerk Norris, are there written objections to read into the record?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have several to read to you. These have been provided to us via email or letters. I'm going to read the addresses for delinquent utilities, the SAD 725, Wildwood, 23151 Wildwood, 23410 Rensselaer, 22131 Sussex, 23251 Eastwood, 24311 Clover Lawn, 14431 Rosemary Boulevard, 24521 Seneca, 22110 Gardner, 24650 Clover Lawn, 23011 Webster, 23230 Kenosha, 15425 Miller, 21841 Gardner, 15061 Marlowe, 24510 Pine Village Boulevard, 23040 Radcliffe, 10630 Troy, and 21590 Greenfield, 24631 Kenosha, 14451 Elm, 22195 West Hampton, 21841 Clover Lawn, and 23751 Coil, 24061 Berkeley, 23055 Sussex. Okay, so again, those were delinquent utility bills that would be removed from the, temporarily removed from the roll. We also have miscellaneous concrete, SAD 727, address, property address 23741 Beverly. We have several for properties light, SAD 728, 10750 Kenwood, 15061 Marlowe, and 10160 Albany, 23131 Forrest. We also have sidewalk replacement to report, and that would be address, property address 13641 LaBelle, 14511 LaBelle, 25960 Radcliffe, 26081 Radcliffe, 26121 Harding, 25991 Radcliffe, 13770 Talbot, 13650 Manhattan, 14620 Rosemary, 14491 LaBelle, 2623 Harding, 2623 Harding, mention that, 26130 Rain, 1452 Boardman, 14011 Manhattan, 14411 LaBelle, 1450 Talbot, 14290 Hart, 13641 Kingston, and 14200 LaBelle. Those are the written, those are the written exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Norris, thank you. I now declare the public hearing on special assessment districts closed. I will entertain a motion to adopt Special Assessment Resolution Number Nine, confirming the roles and withholding the noted temporary exceptions, and Special Assessment Resolution Number Ten, setting the due date of November 11th, 2025, with penalty for the special assessment districts 725, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Is there a second? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? That would be, Mike?
Yes, please.
Yes. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
It's pretty remarkable that we have about $700,000, $700,000 owed to the city for unpaid utility bills and false alarms and blight tickets, and obviously, people are having a hard time paying for, especially sidewalks, that's over $300,000 of that. So I'm just wondering, again, what we should be doing as a city to make it easier for our residents to afford utilities, to afford sidewalk replacement? And I know we're not going to solve the issue tonight, but I do think it's worth revisiting, given the fact that so many people owe money, and I have to think it's because they just can't, and they're falling behind because of the penalties. So, and thank you for coming in tonight and talking about your predicaments.
And thank you for reminding us of the utility assistance sources on the website. Come see me at the end of the meeting, and we'll find them for you, if you, if you can benefit from that. So is there any discussion, further discussion? Roll call? Out of order. We'll get you, though. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Edgar?
Yes.
Mayor McClellan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford?
Yes.
Motion passes. So if you had, yeah, if you had an objection, it will be thoroughly researched, and somebody will get back to you about it. And I think we should look into Councilmember Edgar's, what are we doing for our residents during hard times? Something to look into. Mayor Pro Tem Sean Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And tonight, we just approved everyone but the exceptions or people who came to speak today, right?
Right. Either, either wrote in, or emailed in, or came in to speak, there, those are going to be researched by the staff, and at the next meeting, they'll come back and give us their recommendation.
Thank you, Madam.
Yep, let's see. Public hearing. We are on call to the audience. Is there anything that you would like to share, perhaps? If you can come to the microphone, they can hear you at home.
You want me to recall the audience?
Oh, yes, before you start, there's a little paragraph about call to the audience.
Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Oak Park does not by permitting such remarks support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a city council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal tax on persons or institutions. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Yes. Can you give us your name and?
William Holiday. I was just, I just wanted to ask about the revenue sharing that y'all losing. Who do y'all share, who do we share revenue with, with cities?
Right.
How's that work?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think it's important that we understand what happens.
I, so first of all, you can call my office at 248-691-7410, and I'd be happy to give you a very much more detailed explanation than I'm about to give you.
Okay.
But the state pools revenue that it receives and redistributes that revenue to all of the cities in the state of Michigan.
Okay.
And so it's done, there's a formula that is set up to determine how much we get. So I'll just say one more thing, in 2000, I think it was, Mayor, we were talking earlier about this, we got about $5 million in total.
From the state.
From the state.
Okay.
And last year, we got, I think, around 3.3 million, now, take 150,000 away from that now.
Okay.
So our revenue sharing has been much reduced in the last 25 years, but that's essentially what it is, and it's much more detailed than that, but that's a general.
Gotcha, gotcha. Because when I heard you, that we lost 143,000, right?
147, right.
147.
Yeah.
I was just wondering, like, how, how does that work?
So the state budget determines how that money gets appropriated, and they used, they balanced their books and re-appropriated some funding to more road funding by taking away revenue sharing from some, from the cities.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So alternatively, as I mentioned a moment ago, we're going to get about, we're projected to get somewhere around $1 million more in road funding that we can now use, and about 91,000 in a Public Safety Trust Fund. We don't know how we can spend that money yet, but, so.
And lastly, one last thing, how are the sidewalk, how's the cost of the sidewalks assessed?
I think you should.
The sidewalks, we, we charge our, we charge our residents' cost, essentially, for sidewalk repairs.
Right.
And so we have an objective analysis that we do, and I think it's a 17-year cycle, if I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at Kim Maroney back there, but, or Dave, it's a 17-year cycle now that.
18?
18 years.
19? 20?
30.
No.
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 Every 20 years, they come back to your sidewalk.
You'd like it to be 30. But, so we, we separate the city into quadrants, and we go out and do, as part of our program, capital improvement program, every whatever amount of years, to, to determine if the sidewalks are ADA compliant, which is a federal statute that determines, you know, it's Americans with Disabilities Act, they have to be compliant with that and other things, and if they don't meet those standards, they have to be replaced. So we go out, hire a contractor on behalf of our residents, and have the sidewalks redone at cost, which our residents, if you had it done on your own, you wouldn't get it at cost, you'd get it with a markup, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your interest.
All right.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, I have Ken Sherman, who's filling out a form?
Yes.
Good evening, Ken Sherman, 2384 Old Jerome Street, Oak Park. Two questions regarding two issues. I noticed when I was driving down Coolidge today that there is a sign up saying that 696 at Coolidge is going to be closed for one day next week, and I wondered why, what didn't they do when it was closed for the few weeks a couple of months ago? And then my second question is, I know that a few weeks ago, there was a microfiber issue at the Event Hub that caused some outages to services, especially at the library. So I wondered, when are the repairs going to be done to restore those services, and who is going to be held financially accountable for the repairs to those services? Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Ken, I do have to ask you to show your Tigers shirt, because that's my favorite Tigers logo of all time, with the tiger and the bat in his mouth, right there. Okay, so now I'll answer your questions. Okay. So yes, the line was accidentally cut by one of our contractors, we are in the, and we're, yes, we're going to hold them accountable for that portion. We were going to put a new fiber line in anyway as part of the project, so Dave, I don't know if you want to comment on this, too, but we are in the process of having that repaired. The timing will be another, what, week-ish? Dave?
Yes, thank you. Week, week and a half. We've authorized a contract today for the new fiber line, it's four to five days to get the material here from Kentucky, and a couple of days of labor, so I'm hoping by end of next week-ish. But yes, the contractor will be held financially responsible for that.
And was 696 being closed for a day? Do you know anything?
Well, I was just going to say, so we, Dave, I want you to answer this, but I do want to say this, we have information, I think, going We have information, I think, going out on social media later tonight, if I'm not mistaken, detailing some of that work. So if you're interested in looking at that. But Dave, maybe you know more.
Yeah, so MDOT did respond to us, and we knew this a little bit. We didn't know the exact dates, but when they did the initial repairs about a month ago, there is some epoxy work that they need to finish up on that within 30 days of the original repair. So that repair time is now. They've been doing bridges all along the corridor. They're now at Coolidge. So it will be shut down, I believe it's the 13th and 14th. They've already put the port of a message board sign up. We've gotten notice from MDOT as well. Bertini and our communications team is, the city, what city manager Tom Gates said, is putting it out on social media to let the residents know as well. Small detour around the turnarounds, but there will be construction again.
Someone asked how long the detours are going to be next to the expressway, on the service drive?
Yeah, so it depends on what they're doing. The ones in Oak Park, they're putting in some new electrical lines on the south side of 696. So they're doing boring. That's a rolling work crew. They're down towards the east end of the city now. I would think they're going to be out of the city soon. But throughout the entire corridor, they're doing all kinds of work.
Brickwork, I saw.
Yeah. It would have to depend on what they're doing. Downpass Woodward, it's bridge work. The other way here, as across this time line, is again, bridge work, abovemen work, so.
So we can expect disruptions for a couple of years?
Yes, and I, and I, I don't want to get into it, but the, the project is going to last through next fall. I've mentioned it here before in a presentation we did earlier this year. Once the traffic shift happens, when the motors will be driving on the new pavement, they will still be driving westbound, but on the new pavement, the exits to Coolidge and Greenfield will also be closed. You can't get on at Coolidge or off of Coolidge, or Greenfield.
Or Greenfield.
So if you're coming to Oak Park from St. Clair Shores, you need to get off at Woodward or Southfield. That's the only two exits that will be open. So further disruption is coming. Next year at this time, it'll be wrapping up. We'll forget all about it.
Thank you so much for the clarifying, for all of us. Call to the council. We are kind of overwhelmed with all of the wonderful projects that are going on in Oak Park right now. Oakland County is fixing up the train park. They are not touching the train, but they're going to make sidewalks lovely and, and things to play on and things to sit on. And they are moving the kitchen to the other end of the, of the shelter, so that when you're sitting in the shelter, you can see all the new amenities. They're putting in a new bathroom, his and hers, instead of replacing one that desperately needed replacing. So that's wonderful. The new parking lot behind the 11 Mile Stores is going to be lovely. We will be holding our events there. You'll be coming. We'll be having fun, and it's very exciting. And next door, this thing is just coming up gangbusters. It's going to be a lot more fun to live in Oak Park, thanks to some of these things that will bring us together, which is the purpose of all of it, is to bring us together face to face to have fun and enjoy. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to go back to one of the, what I would consider the highlight of the meeting, which was the merit awards that were given out to four officers who all had over, under two and a half years' experience with, with public safety. I mean, that, we're replacing officers who have worked for us for decades and have great experience, and the ones that we're filling them in with are just picking up, not missing a beat. And so that is a very, very big stress relief for us up here, because we know that our community is being kept safe. And so this is a perfect example that Chief Cooper is doing an ironclad job of making sure that we have the right individuals coming in as far as our department, and keeping everyone safe. As I said, this is one of the safest cities in all of Oakland County, and that, that starts at the top.
Mayor Protem, can I interrupt you just one second? Just, just, I just wanted to, because it's so important to note something you just said. Director Cooper's efforts to recruit the best and brightest to our public safety department should not be underestimated. It is one of a kind, and we are so fortunate in this community to have him in that position. Because like you say, the, the staff members that we are getting to replace, the longstanding employees in that department, are remarkable.
Thank you, city manager. And that was a very, very great highlight to the meeting. And then the last three things I got is, happy birthday to my wife. Her birthday was this week. And then, go Tigers, go Lions.
Yay, yay. City Councilmember Julie Edgar?
Thank everybody here for coming tonight. It takes guts. To come and talk about your predicament, and hopefully, we will continue to talk about what we can do as a city to lighten the burden on our residents. Bad news about state shared revenue, but we did get another million in road funding, and we could certainly use that, hopefully on local roads, which could use some TLC. As a member of ACDC, our Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission, I wanted to, again, congratulate our clerk, Ed Norris, for being our artists and residents for the next three months. It's been really fun to choose artists, and I'm glad that we have one on staff here. It's so important. So if you haven't seen the work out here, please take a look. Wanted to mention that Oktoberfest, which was in the 11 Mile Lot, last Saturday was really another wild success. We draw a lot of families to the event, live music. All the seats were filled. Again, as the mayor pointed out, these are new opportunities for us to meet, new opportunities to build community. So please come out, and we're going to have a lot more going on once the event hub is done. So it's, it's all very exciting. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Beautiful. Councilmember Stephanie Crawford?
And to segue into new opportunities, I just want to remind the public that we are forming a newly established commission, the Oak Park Juneteenth Commission. We are, it's going to be dedicated to honoring Juneteenth through celebration, education, community unity. We are now accepting applications. The deadline is Wednesday, October 15th. You can go online, use the QR code to apply. Also, I wanted to say, I was at the immunization last weekend, and in Shepherd Park, it is beautiful. It is coming along just great. So we are really trying to build a community, as the mayor said, just for us to come together, enjoy one another, and just build a strong community. So thank you, everyone, for coming out. Stay warm, it's cold, and as I always say, be safe and be kind to one another.
Amen. Thank you. There being no further business to come before this council, this meeting is adjourned. If you wanted to talk to me after the meeting, please come up.